Can you hear us now, Jamie?
Yes, I can. Thank you.
All right, please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance. All right, I need a motion to approve the agenda. Deb and Troy. Roll call.
Kate?
Yes.
Troy?
Here.
Deb?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Clay? Absent. Jamie?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Motion carries six zero.
All right, thank you. Items for discussion. First up is the Special Education Services with Dr. Haver. Do they have sharing? Okay.
Okay, let me know if I need this closer or not. I am going to be sharing some information that's happening in the Department of Special Services. And at the end, or if you want to interrupt me in between, you sure can too while I am chatting away. I'm going to start with special education first. And it is dyslexia awareness month, so I thought I would start with dyslexia. Something that we've been doing this past about month and a half is going out to all 23 schools. And we are sharing the characteristics of dyslexia, what to look for, what we're already doing. Also, if students have something such as ADHD and dyslexia together, what the two of those look like. So they can look for those types of areas of need. And then another area for what accommodations they can do in the classroom. We felt that we've been doing a lot of work over the last seven years. Dr. Gaden started the work before I came on. And we feel like we need to branch out and really give information to all of our educators. So that they're starting to see the areas of dyslexia so they can help our students. We also are training interventionists this Friday. And literacy specialists next Friday on dyslexia as well. Because they have a lot of work with that in our response to intervention area that I'll speak to in a little bit. The second part I have on here is really interesting. Last week, I did the Alice Training. Which was over at Rapid City High School and I was visiting with one of the new teachers. And she said, there was this great in-service through DXI at Montana State University, which is a dyslexia symposium. Have you ever heard of it? And I said, no, never heard of this. She goes, you have to look it up. So I looked it up and they just happened to have an in-service for this the night of October 27th. And the morning of October 28th, and it's all online. So I sent it out to the Dyslexia Committee. And they are going to join me in this, but it's also taped. So that we don't have to get subs for people, they can watch it at a later date. And then we're going to gather information from them to see what we're missing here. So we were pretty excited to find something, something of this. And there's lots of great information and lots of great speakers. If you guys would like the link, I can certainly send it to you as well. It's pretty exciting. Hiring for special education teachers and paraprofessionals. Right now, we are about five special education teachers short. And about 35 paraprofessionals short, which is a lot better than where we started. And to combat that, I would say last year, we started out with negotiations. And I know some of you were there and worked with us on that. And we did a differentiated pay scale. And then we added money to the salary. And so some of it helped, which was great. And we're looking at that again this year. I've been building some schedules to share with Koi and Nicole and everyone. So that we can have a baseline to start with, depending on as always, what the state gives to us. Because sometimes it's zero and sometimes it's more than zero. But, oh, yeah, I sure can. Is that better? Okay, we'll see. Jamie, can you hear Dr. Haver now?
So I can hear her, but nobody that's on the public link can hear.
Is, I wonder if this is better. I can kind of hear myself now.
I'm also able to hear, but I wasn't in the beginning. I don't know what was going on.
Is this the only public link we have?
Jamie, the YouTube is down. Just had a little snap. So we are recording the meeting and we will put it up on YouTube tomorrow.
Okay, I will update accordingly. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And so last year for negoti-- oh, I talked about that already. Okay, so we're good there. So what we've been doing this year is putting out flyers with something that we built. And we put that out on social media and then on the top of the website. I've had 35 people share their interest. And then what I do is I take whatever building they're interested in and I ship that off to the principals. And the principals contact them, share a little bit background information about the position at their building. And if they're interested, then they reach out to HR. And Camille Morgan, who's fabulous, will help them get set up in Skyward. And apply for the position and help them take the praxis if they want to. We've hired six people since then. We've had three more people do interviews today. So we're slowly building that process up. So that's been good. So yeah, thank you to HR and their support. They've done a phenomenal job. So impressive. The last thing for special education is the IEP paperwork. Wanted to discuss this a little bit. We hired nine case managers this school year to go with our psychologists. And this wasn't a hire on top. This was to bring special ed teachers that we already had into our system to do this position. And what this position is for is to take most of the paperwork and all of the testing off of our special education teachers. So it splits the position in two. Instead of having one person do all the IEP paperwork, the testing and trying to service hours. So it pulls it apart. So special education teachers have more time with their students, which is really important. This other position takes the testing and the paperwork off. And the testing is probably the biggest part of it. If you've ever heard the statement of too many cooks in the kitchen, we have too many cooks in our testing area. And when you have that happen, testing becomes convoluted and it's not all the same across. And we really need to make it consistent. So we're not underserving or over-serving our population. So that's been a real big help. I've been getting some feedback from special ed teachers saying that they're really excited. That the testing has been taken off their plate, is giving them more time. We're still working on the IEP paperwork part of it. That's the bumpy road and still trying to ebb and flow with that to get more of the paperwork off of the special ed teacher's plate. So they have more time to service hours and to be in classrooms with students or in their classroom with students. And then also with the IEP paperwork, we are creating what's called a goals task force. And for those of you who know what IEPs are, our students have goals at the top. For, and they can have anywhere between one goal and up to seven. And most of our goals for our Learning Center students aren't connected to the skills or the standards that are happening in the regular education classroom. And what we want to do is make sure the goals are focused on what's happening in the classroom. So that they can make the connection together and the regular education and special education teachers can work together. Instead of it being two separate goals. So we're working on that this year. Mr. Christensen is going to help me with that. This will also help with evidence-based grading, which is EVG. And when you go into evidence-based grading, that talks about skills and then standards. This way, we can write our goals that fit with the skills and the standards that our students are going to be working on. Okay, I gotta take a breath. All right, our next one is response to intervention. A couple of years ago, the Office of OCR, Office of Civil Rights came to us and said that our response to intervention and the way that we're doing this is inappropriate. And at the time, the way it was is you would do screeners with your students. And then in our documentation, it said, we would only take the bottom 5% of the students who were struggling. Which is not appropriate. You should take every single kid that's struggling, meet them where they're at. And get them and build them up, build up their skills. So the first year I was here, we worked on the elementary handbook. And I have to give a big shout out to Valerie's team with Amanda Bauer and Tara Nolte. They helped with all the work in creating this and bringing the team together and creating this new handbook for elementary. So what happens is all the students go through a universal screener, which is Akadents. And then in Akadents, you're broken into four quadrants. And usually the bottom quadrant is one where they're missing a lot of skills. So it's quadrant three and four. They take them and then put them into another screener, which is the Wonder Screener. Or 95% screener, or the Passy, or the Past, to see where they're at in these skills. Then what happens is the students who need that instruction is they're put into what's called an intense group. And we try to keep it at a smaller number of students, but we have more groups for that. If a student fills their skill in that intense group, we bring them back into the regular education classroom. If they don't, then in the data shows they need more help, they go to strategic, which is a smaller amount of students and they meet more often. And then hopefully we bring them back or we move them forward into special education testing. So it's very specific. However, you can be a student that takes the Acadian screener. And the teacher within one week or the parent says, this isn't working. Can we, can we move into evaluation or looking for testing for special education? Yep, we can move in between all four of those areas. So that we're meeting our students where, where they need to be met. So elementary was done. They piloted theirs last year. We're in second year of implementation this year, which is going really well. And then for middle school, we put that process together last year. Again, Valerie's team helped and a group of middle school staff members helped us with this. Theirs is a little bit different. They have for their intensive is their lab classes. And then for strategic is their ARC classes. And again, it's that same process. And then high school, we did do behavior last year, the Behavior RTI Matrix. And I have to give a shout out to Tom Stewart. He's the one who put that together for elementary, middle and high school and pulled a team together. They implemented that this year. And there's a group of us right now for math and English Language Arts that we're gathering for the next three months or four months. Leaving out January. In February, we should have an end product. So we're working with a team from each of the high schools.
An end product for what?
For the high school behavior. I mean, high school RTI matrix for all of them together. And then lastly, I wanted to speak about our English Language learners. Last year, we had about 130 English Language learner students. This year, we're running about 190. We have quite a few that are coming to us with no English at all. We call them our newcomer students. And we decided to try a newcomer program for elementary students K through five. And it's a program where they come to Horseman Elementary one day a week. And we immerse them in the English language with Shelley Bowden for five hours. And then they rotate back out to their own schools. So on Tuesday, we have a group that comes from Pinedale Canyon, Lake South Canyon and Meadowbrook and Corral Drive. And then on Tuesday, we have a group that comes from Grandview, Wilson, Robbinsdale in this area. And then we have a group that comes from General Beetle over on Thursdays. And so what we were doing before is my staff would travel around and they'd meet with kids for 15 minutes to 30 minutes, once or twice a week. This way, we can pull them all together and do a five-hour strand with them to try to build up those English skills. So we're hoping to see more movement with that for our elementary students. I do have Tracy Heron, who is another English Language Specialist, and Cynthia Ross, who is a paraprofessional. And they go out and pick up the other students in the schools that aren't newcomers. So we have those covered out there. Middle school, we were going to do a newcomer program at East Middle School. But we found that we had an even split between our five schools. So Adalys Hibner is my English Specialist that goes out to each school once a week. Unless we have Monday off, then she'll split to the schools that don't have high numbers. Our high schools, it's kind of exciting. Solomon Smith is my teacher at Central High School. And he has a newcomer program at the high school level. And we're doing some different things where most of our kids who come to high school, they can be 16, 17 years old. And have no English and have never been in school before. So it makes it very difficult for them to make it through our 22 credits. So he's been working with the staff there on edgenuity. Edgenuity also has a component that is in their own language. So if they take, say, biology in their own language, we can decipher between, do you know the content of biology? Compared to, do you know it with English, English language and biology? So we can split those out and at least give them a pass fail for that biology class to get them with these credits because they know the content. And then they work on their English with, with Saul, which is great. So we are working on a modified diploma track for that as well. So that they can at least graduate with a modified diploma, which would be pass fail. And that way, they can go into the world of work or some of our technical colleges will take them as well.
I have a question about, so we're teaching them English. And so what's the majority of the, would it be their first language or it must be their first language?
Correct.
Right? So if they're not speaking English, what are their, what's their primary languages? It's not one, right? It must be a variety.
We have 23 different languages right now. Spanish, of course, is the highest. But we have tag along, we have Chinese, we have, yeah, we have all, all sorts of different ones.
So if I don't speak Chinese, I mean, how do I teach a person that speaks Chinese English if I don't know what Chinese is?
It is amazing. Technology is amazing. So we have one where it's an iPad. And we have one young student who's in elementary and she'll take the iPad and she'll do the symbols. And then Google Translate will translate it over. So then Mrs. Bowden can see what she's asking and then it'll translate back and forth. We have also found ones where you can plug into your computer for Google Translate. And the teacher can wear a lapel mic and speak and it'll translate. It's not absolutely perfect, but it's, it's something that we're working with. Yeah, lots of trial and error. I have a wonderful team. They're doing a great job.
Jamie has a question. Go ahead, Jamie.
Hi, guys, and hi, Dr. Haver. I was just wondering, do we have any funding or staff or any programming for summer for those English language learners or?
Yes, we do. Last year, the district paid for the summer programs. Year before, we had a grant through the state. So if the grant comes through again, I might try and apply for that.
And did you say Nicole has a question? Nicole, Mrs. Swager, did you still have?
I'm sorry, I, I put my hand down. My question was the same as Bishop Cars.
Okay. And Jamie, do you have another one or did you, or a follow-up? Okay.
No, we am. Thank you very much, dear.
Oh, I had a question about the edgenuity. So will they, let's say biology, do they take biology? I want to call it normal, but for lack of a better term, the standard biology as well as the edgenuity biology or is it instead of?
It's instead of. Since we're doing the modified diploma track and normally we have to keep, like, keep them moving. So it's in lieu of, and so that's why we do it as a pass fail.
And do they have classes that are with everyone else?
Yes. Yeah, and we structure them more like art or photography. Where it's easy to kind of speak with your hands for what you need to do. So that's where we start.
Awesome. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? On any, any of that? I guess I just, I don't know if there's a question to it, but the screeners aren't particularly for dyslexia. Now, the 95% group is good and so is the Akadents in catching specific sounds or things that they're not getting within reading. But I'm wondering, because this isn't specific for dyslexia, the screeners, that the 95%, the Akadents, the wonders in the past, Passy?
Yeah, Passy in the past. There's two different ones.
Because they're not specifically for dyslexia, I think that they can be misleading, at least, at the very least, not catching dyslexia. And there are screeners to do that. But, you know, for the future, I think in order to catch up with these learning gaps and to get these kids quicker, instead of, because the RTI process is still somewhat slow and kind of holds them back in finding out specifically what kind of accommodations they really need. Getting quicker to that piece. It'd be nice if we could find an evaluation specifically for dyslexia, at least where K through two. And I know they're out there, I know they're cheap and they don't take that long. As far as sitting down and evaluating, not, certainly not as long as, or about, about probably the same about the Akadents, I believe. I, I'm not sure on that, but I think in the future, I would like to see that. Because we do have such a problem with math and, and we have a problem with ninth graders coming in at third grade reading levels and third grade math. And so, and we also have a serious behavior problem with throughout the district. And sometimes that's that kid who can't read or isn't doing well in math that gets in trouble. That wants to go down or is sick a lot of times. My stomach hurts. Or, so you, you're getting your behavior problems caught at the K through 12 earlier, maybe? If they're getting accommodated faster and they're not being, felt stupid, I guess. So I, I just, I think in the future, at the very least, we should have had a screener over five, five years ago. Because when the state came up with their five-year plan, that was year one to come up with a screener. But, and, and while these screeners are good and they are catching, it's just by the time you figure out what's, where they're going wrong and whether, what process they need to be in the RTI. It's, it's just not quick enough to get them to the accommodation, I think that they need to get those gaps closed up quicker. But, so that's, it's a comment.
Yeah, no, no problem. I think it'll be interesting to see what they have to say at that DXI. To see how they do that in Montana. So I will make sure to really focus on it.
For that, I'd like to be invited to that.
Definitely will.
Any other questions? I don't see any other hands up. Yeah, go ahead.
You kind of reminded me of one. So you sort of mentioned the fluidity aspect. Is it all based off of the tests or is there some teacher input? Is there more subjective, I guess?
Yes.
Measures in there as well?
There is. Teachers can bring it forward. And so in special education world, we call it skills-based data. And so if a teacher is feeling that a student is, you know, having some sort of symptoms that look towards dyslexia or dysgraphia or any of those areas, they can bring that forward too. So it is very fluid between how we do it. And we bring interventionists and literacy specialists into because of their expertise. And so they help us with those ideas as well and how to help our students.
And then does that work the other way too? That's probably a little less common. But I'm thinking high school level, my kids just click through every test. Is there some of that the other way as well where we can move them out if we're noticing that the test says they didn't do it? But we actually look, sit down with them and they can add and that sort of thing as well?
Yes.
If, if I might add to that, when you have gotten a diagnosis of dyslexia and you are on an IEP or what, what, is it the IEP? Yeah. The accommodations that come along, you'll notice that a lot of teachers will sit there and say, oh, they're doing it perfectly fine now. That's because they have those accommodations. So you don't actually want to get them out of that IEP because that's what's accommodating their disability. Trying not to call it a disability anymore, but a different ability.
Kind of like you were speaking to earlier, though. I also don't want that kid and hopefully they don't feel that way. But I saw a lot of kids that felt like because they were on IEP, they were stupid. And so kind of that same thing, can they do it without the accommodations? I agree. I see, I see the same thing that.
Right.
You have to really like carefully of, are they doing it with accommodations or are they just doing it?
Well, and I actually tutor one student that actually was, got an accommodation through the, the testing that they recently went through. And this person was really trying to actually get what the other kids were getting, just to see if they could now. Get, because we had moved so far along in the varden. And she wasn't getting it, but she was like, is there any way I could do it after school with your testing? Just to see if I can move along a little bit faster or just to check and see. But a lot of times when these kids are getting those accommodations and you've got advocates for teachers that realize it. I've seen a change in some of these younger kids not feeling as stupid because they've been met. And they're getting, because it's so hard to get through certain school parts, you know, all 10 of these certain questions. When if you catch it and you've got it because someone read it to you and you're understanding something, they're like, they're done like that. And they, they feel pretty good about it. They feel accomplished. So, yeah, but it goes both ways.
Right.
You know, feeling stupid one way or another.
Everyone, everyone getting what they need, I guess.
Right, yeah, right.
What I was getting at is whether that's you need more or you need less, is there a way to make sure?
Right.
We're getting where you need.
And I think that's where, why our team felt like we needed to go out and present all of this information to all of the staff members in all 23 buildings. And then repeat it again by going to intervention and literacy and repeating it again. Because really, a lot of the accommodations, regardless if it's 504 or IEP or whatever disability, it's just good teaching. You know, like what you said, when reading the instructions out loud, that's good for all kids. So it's, it's really looking at that and getting that message out. But it, the accommodation doesn't have to be on a piece of paper for it to be good for everybody in the room. Yeah, so, thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Haver?
Yeah.
I'm curious about Akadents. I know that I've had some conversations with Val Seals about the cost increase, which is going to be significant last or next year. Have you and, you have Val Seals talked about that at all?
No, we haven't. It's, it's not in-depth like we need to.
Okay. Please, let's schedule a time when the three of us can visit about that.
Will do.
Thank you.
Hope you're feeling better.
I'm trying, hanging in there.
Kumar, did you have your hand up?
I did. I was just wondering if Lisa could get a, give, give an update on the, the total population increase, increase in the special ed department? Number of students in the district? I know we have had a steady increase of number of special needs students in, in the district, which, which certainly affects the capacity of the school. I was just curious on, you know, any data the last five years or, or, or how, what's the projection? I mean, that's a difficult one to answer, I'm sure. But just curious on, you know, what that looks like. So as we prepare the next topic of discussion, just wanted to, to, to pick your thoughts on that.
It's a good segue, right? So I was meeting with a group of people and Sotira Thompson was having the conversation with us that in the nation, 22,000 students or children are being saved every year that are born and they have some level of disability. Which means that every year, these 22,000 children are going to be entering some sort of schooling situation in public schools. And so Kumar and I have had many discussions about what rooms will look like, what sizes they need to be. All of the different things that go into the classrooms where we need to meet the needs of our students. And we're seeing more and more of this. We've had a couple of conversations with principals about can we do more preschool programs? Do we need to bring in more special education preschool programs? Because they are growing and we're seeing more and more students that have needs. So things will change with facilities, definitely. Yes.
Thank you. Okay, with no other questions, we'll go into the facilities discussion. Kumar? Okay, with no other questions, we'll go into the facilities discussion. Kumar?
Thank you.
And thank you, Dr. Hifer.
I'm gonna share my screen. Okay. Good evening. It's, it's been a couple of years since we did a facilities discussion topic. I know we talked about it when, when we met as a small group at one point, but the, given, given there's um, new board members and new leadership team, and there's a lot of district-level leaders um, that are also new in the district. I thought I would take this opportunity and, and uh, talk to you guys about the, 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 the past, present, and future, maybe to, to kind of sum it up a little bit. But uh, within that, uh, you know, uh, we'll break it down into a couple of different segments and, and, and go, go over the, the different uh, things that happened in the district, the great things that happened in the district that uh, with, with your predecessors, uh, board members and prior superintendents and um, um, leadership team in the past. Um, before we dive deeper into that conversation, I thought, I thought it might be um, a good opportunity to to talk to, uh, we take a minute and then talk about um, the department and, and, and myself and my educational qualifications and um, work experience. So that gives you some content on what my views are and, and in what angle and what lens I'm looking at uh, the problems that, that comes, comes across uh, the table. Um, uh, I don't want to read through line by line, but certainly uh, with a diploma in civil engineering and then a diploma in computer aided drafting. I did my bachelor's in civil engineering and also in a master's in civil engineering at School of Mines with structural emphasis. Uh, currently, I'm enrolled on a postdoctoral science program and about three semesters in. And the last two semesters have been very difficult, so I couldn't take any courses. But that's kind of the educational background of where I am, where I came from and and, and why, and how I look at these uh, different, different projects that come forward. And work experience, uh, worked as a site superintendent and a project manager um, for a college uh, and, and a school construction for three years and uh, worked in Hermans and Nagy Engineering as a structural engineering intern. And a structural engineer and project manager, lead and um, office manager and general manager for six years. And then started with the school district um, in two thousand fourteen, and been with the district since that time. Started as coordinator for construction and maintenance and manager for facilities, and now director of facilities. So that's just a little bit of my professional um, you know, education and my work experience. Um, and I want to touch a little bit about the, the major projects that the district uh, has done. When I say the, the district, that includes uh, you all, board members and your predecessors, like I said, and, and the administration. Um, the, the, the team of members, you know, have done a wonderful job of taking the limited capital outlay dollars and going and building new buildings. And I know one thing that uh, we talk about in our DDL is that we need to emphasize um, uh, the, the accomplishments uh, that we have, we have made as a district uh, over the years. I could go back to nineteen fifties or eighties, but no, I thought maybe we'll just draw the line in two thousand, um, like going twenty years back. And, and letting public know that, that, that uh, you have been good stewards of the taxpayer dollars. And you have done a, a wonderful job in, in, in making, you know, the priorities and, and, and making things happen. So the first project um, in two thousand, two thousand one, there was an addition done to Stevens High School. It's the gymnasium addition on the north end. And then in two thousand four, six, so when I say two thousand four and six, you have to um, uh, think, look at this from this perspective. Two thousand three, four timeframe, they hired a design team, started talking about this potential school building. And then documents were drawn, biddings were done, and the construction was done, completed in the two thousand six, two thousand seven timeframe. So that's why I have the two thousand four and six on there. A, a brand new elementary school was built on the, in the valley. Uh, that's the Valley View Elementary School, that's about a fifty-three thousand square foot addition. In two thousand six, two thousand seven, uh, wrestling room and weight room additions were uh, done to Stevens High School. And in seven and eight timeframe, uh, the board at that time hired a company called MGT of America and did a facilities assessment. And based on those assessments, um, and the priorities and the discussions that they had, uh, built schools um, like uh, General Beetle Elementary. Uh, probably that was in the works at that time, but then two thousand eight, two thousand twelve um, timeframe, that's, that's like four to five year timeframe. Um, that is a project that I was involved with, uh, working from the design team standpoint. Um, and those are multiple-phase projects, to be exact, a three-phase project and over two hundred thousand square foot plus additions were done to that, uh, to that site. Uh, Kate, Kate, do you have any questions, or? Okay. Um, and two thousand nine, twelve timeframe, a, a brand new middle school was built on the eastern part of the the city, uh, that's East Middle School at hundred and forty-eight thousand square foot. In two thousand ten, twelve, Crowell Drive Schools additions and renovations. Um, and that's the picture that you see on the right-hand side in that um, lower corner. Um, that is Crowell Drive's additions, and the brick color change would kind of give you a hint of what the new building footprint was versus the, the existing. And eleven thirteen, uh, modifications and additions, uh, more renovations were done to Rapid City High School. Um, so, so the top picture, the, the, where you see my cursor, that, that portion of the building was added on to Rapid City High School. And renovations uh, were, were um, done for the Performing Arts, the Historical Theater. Um, and, and on the backside of the school um, in that timeframe. And of course, I'm not talking about dollar amounts or anything, just to give you a thirty thousand foot view of the, the history and, and the work that uh, school board and the community has, or the administration has done. Um, and then uh, fourteen sixteen uh, renovation and additions to Stevens High School. Um, um, uh, science classroom, ten classrooms were added on. And then a link uh, between the existing building and, and the new building by the library was added on. And renovations were done to the existing science classrooms and converted into general ed classrooms or any other um, classrooms that are being used now. And then fifteen, sixteen timeframe, uh, the board hired uh, MGT of America again to uh, up, provide an update on that study. Uh, to where we were uh, from two thousand eight study and how, based on the progress we have made and the growth that's happening and our um, uh, enrollment figures, where, what does Rapid City Schools' future facilities look like? And also to provide an updated facilities assessment. Um, that included uh, uh, building condition score, facilities uh, condition score, educational suitability, technology readiness and grounds readiness. That you, I'm sure you all um, are well aware of that. And if you, if you are, if you aren't, if you're interested, I have the copy with me and I can sit down and, and go through that uh, document with you and bring you up to date on what happened in that timeframe. And the results from that timeframe. In two thousand eighteen, nineteen, uh, the you made the choice to buy this building and, or the board made the choice to buy this building. And here we are um, in, in this building, moved into, uh, in that timeframe. And then nineteen twenty, uh, tried for a bond referendum, uh, and, and that uh, um, I'm sure you all are aware of that. And then twenty-one, twenty-four, currently, we're working on building a new South Middle School. And that's about a hundred and thirty-five thousand square foot building. That kind of gives you a snapshot of what, you know, the district has done with the dollars for the last twenty years, roughly. Yes, ma'am.
So I'm just curious on the MGT, so we did a study in two thousand seven, two thousand eight. So the General Beetle School and Central High School additions and the new middle school, was that all a product of that?
And it's well before my time, but there were recommendations made on that two thousand seven, eight study. And that could have been, because they might have already started working on uh, central high school design at that time, so they've added that as a recommendation. But uh, I'm, I'm not privy to that information.
And then the one in two thousand fifteen, sixteen was just an update?
Just an update to that study.
Two times for this thing now.
Uh, exactly, but the first time was more of an in-depth study, and the second time was kind of a high-level study. Because some of the buildings that no work was done, the numbers didn't change, the scores didn't change, since they had all that data. Um, and they did uh, take advantage of that data and time that they already spent and and then did community presentations and uh, uh, study input sessions in five middle schools. And, and they gathered that data and brought it forward to uh, to the board. And Mr. Hanson could, could speak for it, because I believe he was um, there in the board at that time.
So as I, I, I can say that I think it was pretty in-depth as well, though. I mean, the book came back this thick.
Right. Because that, that study, um, like I mentioned earlier, the four different categories that they scored in. And that, that gave us a, a dollar figure and a score for where the buildings are. What kind of, what kind of condition they are at, and how much money do we have to put in based on the numbers at that time? And they provided some estimates in that study too, uh, like three different phases, one to three year and three to six year type estimates. And um, and from that study, uh, certainly, South Middle School scored the lowest in, in condition score. Um, so anyway, uh, that, that was done in fifteen sixteen.
So we're still currently following that plan? Is, is, what is it, just advisory, something?
It's advisory. If you didn't have the five hundred million dollars you needed to do everything
In the plan.
In the plan, only some of it could be done, that was even barely touched on.
I, I would say Bishop Carr that that is a data point. Um, that, that you consider the values, the results from that. And then now the Rapid City is, has changed since, since, since they looked at it from that lens in two thousand fourteen, fifteen timeframe. Our needs are a little different. Um, strategic plan is a little different. So you take that as a data point, but the building condition didn't change. I mean, you, other than the work you will see in the uh, future slides, other than the deferred maintenance and the preventative maintenance and the reactive maintenance we have performed in the district, nothing changed um, as far as the condition go from that, uh, from that study.
So I guess my, my question is, in um, and in the talk at the facilities meeting, is, does this document have any value as a resource in our conversations of going forward, right? Because if all the schools were scored and nothing's been changed to m- majorly change a school's score, so the bottom schools are still the bottom schools.
And you're correct, sir, and you would see um, in future slides, and I would share the, the work that we have done since that study. That would change the score a little bit, but certainly the, the study has some value uh, that can be added to our discussions in the facilities committee.
And I think the bond, um, one of the schools that they addressed were the ones that were lowest. According to, anyway, yeah.
Correct, and there are recommendations in there for consolidation, for example.
Right.
Um, and the, the number of students, I mean, there's, there's all of those data uh, in that study that we will certainly take advantage of and, and use it to, 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 to this date. So that's a, a quick update on the whole holistic picture. Um, and want to take a couple minutes and talk about what, what the capital outlay process looks like. And, and before I dive deeper into that, um, maybe you all are aware of this. Um, we have, uh, we own roughly two point four million square feet um, of, of space um, in the district. And that includes twenty-three school buildings and seven different support buildings like Lincoln Jefferson or Bus Barn, the warehouse, maintenance. So that is the support buildings I'm referring to. Um, and on any given year, um, lately, it's been close to six, but on any given year, um, the, the district has been spending anywhere between four to six million dollars on deferred maintenance and reactive maintenance uh, from the capital outlay dollars towards that area. Um, and, and, and that's, I mean, given Coy can, I'm sure can talk about the, the details. And we'll talk about that in our facilities committee too. Um, but just, just so you know, uh, that is how much money um, has been spent on, on, on the capital outlay projects lately.
Kumar, let me just also say, it's good um, public information when we talk about um, what we're doing with capital outlay. It's just not us taking money out of capital outlay and buying balloons and
Right.
And stuff. A, a lot of money from that account is being used to upkeep what we already have.
Right.
And I don't think that point is, is stressed enough when we talk about um, the capital outlay and what it, it, it is doing a lot of what it's doing now. Sure, sure, we could be doing better, but it's just not a slush fund that we're just
Very true.
Spending money out of. It's, it's, it's being used to upkeep what we have.
Very true. And one other point, Bishop Carr, is that from the previous slide, the, all these uh, renovations and additions. You know, um, the board borrowed money from capital outlay certificates to be able to build these. So which means um, with the current capital outlay, we're still paying um, mortgage on, on the loans that we have borrowed to, to do those projects. Without going to a bond, that is one mechanism that the board, boards used. And um, uh, to accomplish those projects and the milestones. Uh, that's a, that is a third, and, and another third is this, and then another third, there's other competing priorities. Curriculum updates, uh, uh, buying buses and uh, technology needs. And there's all sorts of departments that, you know, we, we, we dedicate those dollars towards and, and uh, I see Coy has a, has his hand up.
Oh, yeah, go ahead, Coy. Mr. Sassy?
Thank you, President Thomas. Uh, I literally um, was just going to give some context on, on what Kumar just said. I, I think just to be very clear, and, and this is important. Yes, that approximate four to six million dollar um, amount has been flowing into uh, the buildings for the preventative maintenance side of things. But if you were to look holistically at the overall picture of the capital outlay budget, um, you would see more along the lines of probably thirty to forty percent in any given year of overall capital outlay resources flowing into um, buildings because of capital outlay certificates that have been issued um, over the last fifteen to twenty-year period that, of course, have constructed those buildings, expanded buildings, um, did the, the major upkeep and, and a lot of those things. So um, that, that was all I was gonna add. Kumar nailed it. And uh, just wanted to input that, because I think it's important for the community to understand there, there is a great degree of those resources flowing to our facilities.
And let me just add to that, because I think there's, there's a, there's an assumption in the community that as money comes into that account, because there are people saying, well, why don't you use capital outlay to build a new school, right? Because there's that concept that it just gets bigger and bigger, 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 and then there's enough to build a school. Well, I, I think the education part of what all of our comments are, yes, it is added to every year, but it is drawn out from four buildings and four the things that, that Mr. Sassy said, so.
Michael.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, yeah, kind of related to that. Uh, I guess I don't know if this is a Coy or Kumar question, but um, how much? Roughly how much is total capital outlay every year?
So, uh, Mr. Berklin, regular, what, what I would call regular ongoing capital outlay um, revenue, which is primarily property tax, um, is right now about twenty-eight million dollars a year. Um, obviously, as the district's property valuation grows, sorry about that.
No worries.
Okay.
I'm gonna lock myself in my garage now.
I usually use the bathroom, but that doesn't work either.
Excuse me, I'm sorry about that, guys. I, I'm locking myself in the garage. As the, as the uh, district's property valuation grows, um, that revenue obviously grows along with it. Um, and over the last, you know, five to seven-year period, that growth of overall property valuation has been really aggressive. And um, as a matter of fact, I just received the district's uh, preliminary valuation today from uh, Wendy Simler, the, the uh, state auditor. Um, and it looks like the, the district's property valuation increased by almost eighteen percent from last year, which is a huge amount of growth. So um, we, we definitely have a growing valuation, which is helping that, that revenue picture, Mr. Berklin.
Awesome. Um, kind of follow-up question to that. Um, I, I forget, how much did South Middle School cost?
On today's dollars, it's the actual bid was sixty-one million, four hundred and thirty thousand dollars. Was the actual construction cost, and then that includes um, construction of the new building and the demolition. And so soft costs, and we still have to put money on the athletic field design. So it will end up anywhere between sixty-five to sixty-six total. That includes fixtures and furnitures and all of that.
Awesome. So kind of to Bishop Carr's point, even if we did spend every single dollar of capital outlay, that's three years for South Middle School. That's three years for South Middle School, for one middle school, not to mention that. Seven other elementary schools and whatever else we need. So thank you.
That that's true and and you know, and it's unfortunate with the market the way it is, and I hope that that changes um um. Uh in the near future and and we will go back to more of a normalcy mode in in getting things done the right, I mean, as. Educational institutions cannot afford these big ta- dollar amounts to be able to build these uh buildings, so. Deb has a question?
Deb does, yes. But that's not, we don't we don't use capital outlay just for construction and for maintenance and we use it for curriculum and other things, right?
Right, yeah, so even longer if we just use capital.
Exactly, and I think I can assure you this, that uh we had a very robust first meeting discussion at our facilities committee and lot of. Ideas and thoughts um in in from the leadership team and and uh everybody participated, so. We will have those in-depth discussions at those facilities committee meetings and and look at these. Dollars and how it's being spent and also look at projects and look at priorities and. And all of that is gonna happen uh at that level and then bring it up to you for um recommendations from that point on. With that, uh uh the the next few bullet points are kind of the processes for the 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 capital outlay. Um the mini projects that that we do, that that four to six million dollars worth of projects that we do every year. So I'd say, you know, we start school in the month of August and late August or early September, depending on the year. Um and we we leave um uh that one month for the principals to settle in and get everything. Under their their um the way it should be done and. And then we send out emails in October requesting the principals to work with the building uh. Their building level team and also their custodians and and people in the building to figure out what their needs are in the district as far as building. Building needs go. Um uh and then they they fill out that form and send that form back to us in November. And we work with the the maintenance team uh and our buildings and grounds team, which is they're wonderful to work with. Um in November and December and uh uh. Get an update from them and also understand their challenges and how. How are they spending their day-to-day? Uh you know, is is there a specific school that they're spending most of their time in? And how do we prioritize this, um keeping that in mind? Um and then uh in January, we we worked towards prioritizing and consolidating these lists based on. Is this something that has to be done for us to be able to open school next year, or is it a safety, security? Building preservation, education program needs, or is this preventative maintenance that we have to do? Uh to be able to, you know, start chipping away on that on that part too, so it's a combination of. Reactive maintenance and preventative maintenance projects happen uh in that capital outlay. And then we bring those recommendations to the facilities committee in February. Um and then the to the school board uh subsequently and and talk. Give them an up, give you guys an update on 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 what the preliminary list looks like and what the dollar amount looks like and then Koi's office. Um gives us a a rough a dollar amount based on the legislative session, based on. Negotiations and yes, it is six or it is no seven or it is five. We get that number and then we we pair those projects down. Um to that to meet that dollar amount to balance the budget um from that standpoint. Um and uh March and April, uh then we, based on the preliminary blessing. We uh go into the buildings again and investigate those projects and then figure out is this is this. What it is, or is this, is there more to it? I mean, just because the paint is peeling, is there more, you know, is there anything behind it? Um those kind of investigations happen and the design teams, uh we we draw the dra- drawings and then we um. Um uh get the staff input at the school and get those documents complete and go go out to bid. Um in the month of May uh uh timeframe, April, May timeframe. And hoping, uh you know, hopefully we will get some bids um in time and then if any bids that we get. Will bring it to the school board for approval during the preliminary budget approval process in May. And you approve the preliminary budget and then the bids um subsequently and then we. Uh procure the contractor order materials, get the materials here on time. Uh to be able to, I mean, on time is subjective at this point, but to be able to get those projects started. Um and and then complete uh complete those projects between July and August. So our fiscal year starts July first, so. We will, we we have to write our purchase orders accordingly to manage this fiscal year, next fiscal year. Uh so at any given uh uh summer, we will be working on two to three years worth of projects to be able to meet the timelines. And have um the products that we need to have at the site to be able to get these projects complete. Uh in a meaningful manner. Small projects sometimes will be combined to get a better pricing from contractors. Um some of these bigger contractors may not be interested in one Z two Zs, but that's where we combine them. And then uh that's better on the state bid law on twos and then get those price, get those done uh in that. Limited timeframe between summer school and custodial maintenance and and normal routine maintenance and. And all of this. So this is kind of the general process. Is there any question on that?
Deb has a question, go ahead.
So what you're talking about.
Correct.
So so not any like general maintenance that would come out of the the general fund?
Yeah, so the general maintenance, like, you know, light fixture that needs to be replaced or a carpet that needs to be maintained, you know, those kind of. What's that?
Painting.
Painting. Everything that's comes out of general fund and that's under Koi's office, under the Buildings and Grounds Department. They uh take care of the the maintenance and and the day-to-day maintenance of that. It's like a motor that burnt out or a filter that needs to be changed or a pipe fixture that needs to be changed or that's leaking. Those kind of routine maintenance happens with those general fund dollars.
Okay, thank you. Jamie, hold on, Jamie's got a hand up, go ahead.
Yeah, I was just wondering, like, this has been um enlightening hearing the process. I'm wondering if this is like for districts, is this typical and is there any way like? We could look at streamlining the process, it just seems a little tedious and slow, especially considering the age of our buildings or. If this is just like industry standard and this will be is what would be expected as far as the timeline.
As far as the the timelines and and the budgets go, I think I'm the the best person to answer that is Koi. Um but but I will say the 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 time that we have is. Uh when the kids are not in the building, that's when these works have to get done and we have this change in fiscal year in between those. Um but negotiations and legislative sessions all play a role. In a in a different way in 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 this whole thing, so Koi, if you wanna.
Yeah, he's got his hand up, go ahead, Mister Sassy.
Sure, thank you, President Thomas. I I think that's a really excellent question, Jamie, and. Um a lot of what Kumar just said is absolutely applicable to the answer to that question. I think, first of all. Um is it industry standard? Yeah, I would say it's it's fairly industry standard, obviously. Each district is gonna look a little bit different based on their unique needs, their uh uh. Their own situation, but I I would say it's fairly industry standard. Um you know, like anything we do um at 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 a public school district level. Um processes are necessary and they alleviate a lot of the pressure that we see for. Um ensuring that taxpayer dollars are used as efficiently and as effectively as possible. Um in in so in these situations, like you just heard Kumar talk about, there are. Multiple big pieces of information that are coming together. Um in in trying to understand what this pot of money is going to look like. Um as we've talked about many times, capital outlay is a very broad area. Um you know, facilities is is one piece of capital outlay, but there are. Several really large functions and areas that it serves, and so there's a ton of competing interests. There are a a lot of needs across the district and so what this process helps us do is to. Um really try to understand and line up those resources to the best of our ability. Um and then lastly, I would add, could that process improve? Yes, of course, it it can always improve. Um communication can always improve, timing can always be improved. Um you know, Kumar and I have have worked together quite a bit in our time together. Um to do what we can to to try to help him move his process along a little more quickly. Um so, yeah, absolutely, we we can work on that every single year and and I think get a little bit better every single year, but. It there there is, the process is in place for a reason and and um. Again, you know, that that is fairly standard and it's it's really to make sure that. We understand the needs and we're doing our best to line the resources up along those needs.
Thank you both very much.
Bishop Carr, did you have a question? No? Oh, okay, go ahead and continue.
Now that microphone's on, okay. Um with that, and I'll move on to the next slide if I can, come on. No? Okay. Not sure what's going on. Okay, um. And and since I started, I just wanted to add a couple of these things I thought was interesting, so. Want to talk about just a few projects, not every single project that I worked on since I started. But the first one I worked on for the district uh before getting getting hired was uh. Uh Michael, you might remember this, um uh Central High School. Um uh there was a structural study that we had to do, we had multiple cracks happening in that building. Um and we had uh multiple crack monitors in the building, beams were cracking and columns and 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 we. Uh scanned and 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 analyzed it and figured out that. That can during the construction, some reinforcement weren't in place where it should have been, so. We had to add uh columns right next to the existing column, so in this picture that you see on the right-hand side. This, so right there, that is an existing column, precast column, and then here's the beam that wasn't. Question and and it was cracking, we had to add this column adjacent to this beam and go down. And to the pileaster and pile cap and support that building and and keep it from moving. Um and that happened the entire, along the entire social street. And you wouldn't even see it now, if you go, you walk around, you can't, I mean, it's part of the the building now, but. That was one of the interesting projects that I worked on as one of the first projects in the district. Um and then um. The other thing I want to mention is um Mister Hanson can uh uh attest to this and he was part of this conversation is that. Twenty thirteen, twenty fourteen, uh one of my first projects was got handed a a a a. List of projects that is um based on a roof, a hail damage that occurred in two thousand thirteen fourteen timeframe and. And then uh um the. Mr. Yannick at that time was my supervisor, asked me to work on on those projects and the insurance settlement amount at that time. For those two different claims totaled about one point four million dollars, and as we were getting ready to get the drawings going and walking the buildings. I was seeing more damages than what the insurance company was sharing with us and then. So requested that the insurance company come back and reevaluate and we had about seventeen different visits. Uh with multiple engineers and fortunately with me having the the background and knowledge. Of what that structure, the system performs and how it performs, we were able to go back and forth. And we settled that claim uh with an additional uh dollar amount to a total new claim amount for four million dollars. Uh going from one point four to four million dollars, so there was new two point six million dollars brought into the school at that time. With with those money, um we um uh. Changed the roof um and we put in a new hail resistant roof uh for almost on thirteen buildings, either completely or partially. And that's one project that was that was fun to to go back and forth. Um with the with the insurance company and, for example, this is this is one picture that shows the past and. I don't know how clear it is on TV there, but on the left-hand side, that is prior to roof replacement, so you can see all the the pale yellow. Ish color roof on Stevens High School and after that project, you can see on the right-hand side um all that bright roof, so almost that entire building. Um ninety percent of that roof at Stevens High School was replaced, uh part of that project and it didn't. Cost district a lot of money um in in doing that. Um and then district-wide, uh we have uh completed a lot of projects, uh mostly. Uh you know, everything is done based on data, uh and and one of the first ones is. Uh lighting upgrade, uh lighting replacement study that we 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 performed in the district to find out. Uh where we have obsolete fixtures, where we are spending more of our maintenance time on. Uh where the challenges are and where are the low-hanging fruits? Um can we can we save some energy by changing these lights and and going? Um going in those and then gain efficiencies. So um you would see on the bottom part of the um. That slide, in twenty seventeen, eighteen, our electricity uh budget, are we paid a one point nine million dollars? Or close to two million dollars at that time, and then eighteen nineteen, uh we reduced that to one point seven. And then in nineteen twenty, that's kind of an anomaly, I would say, but it's one point six. And that's that's partially because uh we had um few school days because of COVID in the. The later part or earlier part of twenty twenty, which counted into that fiscal year, and then twenty and twenty-one. Um it's back up to kinda sorta that one point seven where where we were expecting it to be. But at the same time, we had um HVAC units running constantly because of COVID, but the continual fresh fresh air flushes. Uh in the later part of twenty-one, um which added to the cost on in twenty-one, twenty-two also. So uh but overall, we're making good progress uh on that energy department too, on that budget. Uh and along with um uh. Maintenance savings and our our resources uh from the maintenance department, their time is being spent. Uh valuable in other areas and we've also standardized fixtures and. On that top left-hand corner, you'd see there's multiple different kinds of fix fixtures, lighting fixtures. This was Stevens High School, uh fifty different fixtures at that one school and we had to bring it, we brought it back close to ten. Cuz there's all sorts of different other heights, uh canopies and classrooms to high ceilings, so. With all of that, we standardized uh those fixtures also. Um and um. The overlap standards related to, um I think Bishop Carr saw in my office uh on uh one time when. When we were testing carpets, uh you know, we we uh literally test the products that we are recommending. Uh to the school, whether it's a scratch test or uh um. Spill something on it and then uh uh vacuum it, so whatever that test might be, anyway, we standardized those, standardized fixtures. Plumbing fixtures, um seating tiles, paint colors. Um cuz that's one of the things that when I was first walking through the district, there was a ton of paint colors in in the district and. There's no reason to have that many and there was a study at that time which colors are better for education and not and. So based on that study, you know, um we standardized those colors. And then CCTV camera, I mean, placing a camera, why, uh why do we need a camera here and? We created a standard procedure and and we've implemented that at North Middle School and this year at Central and Stevens. Um and it's it's going great. Um and then uh front-end documents and we really didn't have a standard document where we can. Give it to an architect team or a contractor and go, here are our minimum requirements. As as a school district, you know, here's how you should be dressed when you're working in the schools, here's the minimum expectation, here's the background checks needed. Here's the various kind of uh things that you have to meet and here's your minimum insurance that we need, so we've developed all of those. Um and then currently working on standardizing some contract language um uh with, but. We we use AIA uh for most of our our documents, but for. Uh some of the bigger projects where we don't have architects and engineers, we we need to have some con- standard language for contracts, we're working on that. And then we also uh have an elementary education spec um uh that we completed last year. And with that spec, you know, if we're going to build an elementary school, we know exactly what the square footage looks like, the student to teacher. Uh suited to um a square foot ratio and the needs in the gym, needs in other various support needs, including special ed. Um and and we'll be able to uh get a better building built in that manner and provide a spec to the architect. To have him design the the building and then we can potentially take the 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 documents and use reuse it in multiple locations. Um based on the site conditions, subjective to change, but. Um playground assessments and you you know, another one we did, uh to me it was kind of a major one was uh. We digitized the building plans and specs and to the right you would see uh where the plans were stored. Um historically somewhere in one area and somewhere above. Pipelines and in mechanical rooms and you know, all over and we have standardized those. Um so now if we if we go into uh what's called Arch Facilities Campus and our maintenance team has access to it and. And uh our our architects and whoever that we, they need access, they have it, but all of our buildings are archived. Um we have all the plans in this building now in the basement, the hard copies, but we have scanned them all. Um some of them are very hard to scan, uh all brittle, you know, hundred-year-old plants and seventy-year-old plants, they were, so it was hard to. Scan, but we did them, uh for example, this one is Central High School and, you know, going back from the days of. Construction to 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 this day, we have all the documents that are needed um um. In one spot for everybody to find. I can go back to my presentation, oops. Okay. Oops, there we go. And then there's other projects. I don't think I need to go in detail, but I put this on so that, you know, public, whoever's looking at it, at least they will get a glimpse of some of the important things that we have done in the district.
Really quick, did you send that to us?
No.
Go ahead and please send it to the board members.
Yeah, I sure can. And I had a panic attack an hour before the meeting and because the spreadsheet didn't open or the, the presentation didn't open. But anyway, I will send that to you guys. And I want to talk about a couple of the key projects. Uh, you know, we talk about the preventative maintenance, what is a preventative maintenance? And, and this building is North Middle School. Um, I would say we had multiple issues with that school, uh, structural settlement, um, water, uh, piping collapsed. Um, and slab settling, walls moving, indoor air quality concerns, um, moisture in the tunnel where we are moving air and that creates air quality concerns inside the classrooms, trip hazards all over. Um, this was a project we took on and, and preserved this building. And you can see the, the site layout, um, and what it is. And there was an annex, uh, at that school, uh, at that point. And then, um, this is the existing courtyard, uh, where we had, uh, significant structural problems. And you can see on the right-hand picture where the slab leans towards and then this retaining wall settling. Um, and you can see how far it has settled, um, in, in the past. Um, and whenever drains water never leaves that courtyard. And to the left where the windows are, that's a lower level and where, where we have had mo- moisture problems and structural problems, um, in that building. Uh, and settling across, it's not in one location, in multiple locations where you saw the highlighted areas. And where, where you see these trees, right below those trees were, uh, is a tunnel that goes between the building that you see on the far side into this, uh, building right on this side. So, uh, to the east side, so there is mechanical tunnel, there is movement happening within that. There were trees planted from, you know, back in the fifties or sixties, whenever. Um, and everything was moving. And when it rained, the water never left the site because there's, there's just no way for that thing to go because pipes were too small. And we took that courtyard, we fixed all those. And then in, in fixing, in, we put the courtyard back, uh, to better use and, and also extended the life of that structure, preserved those trees. So the students enjoy that, that courtyard, um, every day, um, even today. And, and the materials that we specified are maintenance friendly. It's not like the custodian has taken his mower or weed eater every day and, and, or every other day. And it was turf and kids playing in one area and tracking the dirt back into the, into the building. So this was done in my time, um, after we started. And in, in that, we, we took advantage of the grades and worked with our, uh, quarry in Town Hills Materials. They donated all those rocks and we, um, created that, that amphitheater and the kids use it. Uh, you know, on a good day, they, they're out there using it. So here's a picture from the left, what was North Middle School. On the right, what is North Middle School now? Um, look at the courtyard, look at, uh, uh, everything around that, that facility. Uh, we have, uh, changed, uh, how, how transportation happens within that site. And also, I mean, the big picture thing is that structure is now preserved. And we have extended the u- useful life of that structure. Now, we don't have to spend a sixty million dollars immediately in, because some of these were settling. Um, and, uh, that's another achievement. Rapid City High School, what a beautiful building, that all worked on in two thousand twelve, thirteen. But we has, uh, started seeing settlement happening between where the new building and the old building was. Um, and, and, in, in that, we have, uh, you know, the, the landscaping that was done back in that time, uh, to me, wasn't right, shouldn't have been done that way. So we had to spend the time, money in fixing all of those. And we worked with the design team who did the design back then. In fact, they paid for, um, some mishaps in the design and Nicole might remember this, um, a loading dock that had to be reconstructed, um, on the, on the backside of Rapid City High School that was paid for by the design team. Um, but we reconstructed, anyway, we fixed those and now that building is, um, great. On the front, we, now we have some other issues on the backside with moisture coming in, so we have to deal with it later. Uh, that's another project we're working on. Um, now, Rapid Valley, um, I'm not sure how many of you remember this, um, um, Deb Kate, you might remember this. Um, this, this started as an indoor air quality concern. Um, and in assessing that, that we, we found out that along the entire length of the building, uh, the bottom two feet, you can see the sheetrock, uh, the call, discoloration on that sheetrock, um, from the, now back in the fifties construction, uh, the flashing wasn't done properly. So, so all that moisture that is hitting the brick was going down to the structure. And all that air quality issues were happening in that, in that school. Here and Blackhawk, the same exact type of construction, same exact way it is. So we had to go in there and cut the bottom two feet off the brick off and the structure off and add the support and rebuild that from scratch. Um, and to the right, I mean, you, you would see where the, the studs have even rusted out. Um, and we had to add new studs and redo that part of the, uh, the structure to be able to bring it back to this condition. Now that building is preserved and that building is going to stay there for a, a longer period of time. Um, and that is making sure, we just don't put a Band-Aid on something, but we go tackle the core problem and then fix it once and done. Um, and this, we did, we had to do that exactly at, uh, Blackhawk. Uh, Meadowbrook Elementary School was another one where we had multiple issues, um, with high water table, of course. Rapid Creek is within baseball hidden distance from there. And whenever it rained, um, water never left the site, uh, in, in a timely manner. And if water came to the site, we have flooded classrooms before, um, in this building. And you can see, uh, how much standing water is there on that picture, um, closer to the classrooms. And this is inside a courtyard, um, that it just never left, um, the building. And the condition of the concrete was like this, and this is where the kids were playing and, and this is inside the school. Um, in a courtyard out, of course, but not inside the classroom. And these were the conditions and winter, everything freezes and it turns into an ice and it's just a constant throw ice. And then everything comes back and it pulls back next to the building. Um, and we took these conditions and developed a design to address those problems. But as you can see, it's a courtyard, we had to cut through, uh, the, the building to come axe, gain access to that space. Um, and we did that. And in, in doing that, addressing all the moisture issues, putting it, uh, putting everything in pipe and taking everything away from the, the structure. You can see on the left-hand side where the pipe, pipes are. And in putting it back, instead of just putting concrete, well, we, it is concrete. But we took the concrete and, and worked with the steam concept that, that we were pushing forward in the district to see how we can bring the classroom outside and how, how do we incorporate those two different things? Um, and what you see on the right is the gentleman that's drawing the arc is actually the asteroid belt and the, the orbit. Um, uh, for sun, uh, on, actually not sun, but I think that might be second, yeah, probably Venus. Anyway, um, here's what it turned out to be, uh, in that courtyard. Um, and, and all this, like I said, the, the big concrete is, is sun. And then you have, you have the different planets and we, in fact, included Pluto and that thing is way over there. But what, what this, this did was, this is what happened, uh, with that, the students, students enjoyed, uh, the, the courtyard. And also we took care of the moisture problem, the structural problem in that building and, and also extended the life of structure. But the place that they have now is just used by the kids, um, um, and staff. And it's ADA accessible and, and it's just a wonderful place, um, um, for the kids to be. So again, a building's preserved, um, like I said, North Middle School, Meadowbrook, General Beetle, we had some settlement on the new building. Um, and that needed to be fixed and we had doors that weren't closing properly. Uh, walls were that were moving on the north, northwest end that had to be fixed. South Park Caluminary, we had settlement happening in that school, um, that, that we, uh, stopped, uh, the settlement. Rapid Valley, you saw those pictures, Blackhawk, exact same thing and, and Rapid City High School. Um, and then Canyon Lake, you know, we had to, uh, fix it temporarily, knowing, knowing the condition of that building. You see those pictures on the right-hand side, the bottom, uh, leftmost picture, that is actually a structural, um, slab of Canyon Lake Schools underneath the classroom. And in the bathroom, uh, uh, we had to close those bathrooms for about a month in, in shoring those structures and rebuilding those structures underneath. And, and a hole that we had to cut was about a two-foot by two-foot opening to, to go in and get all these taken care of, um, in that site. And Noelwood, we still have, uh, we are monitoring, uh, the cracks in that building. And, and we have some work that we are progressing and this year we have some money set aside for some design work. And then, uh, Grandview the same way, Lincoln the same way. And the other things that we didn't talk about, or I didn't show you about the pictures were Southwest Middle School, we had water coming into the classroom. I'm sure if you drive by that school now out in the front, uh, the landscape looks different. There's artificial turf, there is no maintenance in the front area. All of that work that we did to be able to address the moisture and then put it, put everything in drain instead of putting grass back in that location, which again adds on maintenance and, and all of that. We used, uh, some money that we got from DOT, um, from Central Project and then, uh, supplemented with the school project. And, and were able to accomplish that at Southwest Middle School, East Middle School, Wilson Invest. I mean, I could go on, on those lists, but we were able to preserve the buildings and then provide, uh, an extended life of those structures. Oh, uh, oh, this is nurses area. I don't even know why this picture is there. But it's, uh, uh, it's another project that we did in three weeks. Um, some of you may remember that, uh, you know, we have, uh, nurses areas without running water, uh, no access to bathrooms in schools. And, and we worked with our great nurses and, and turned around and took care of those spaces. And also, um, uh, used maintenance friendly products in that epoxy paint so we can wipe it off, go clean. And, um, and, uh, took care of those projects. And currently we're working on handful of projects from twenty-one, twenty-two. As you saw the, the timelines and how those fit with the actual construction timeline to approval timeline. So we're still working on twenty-one, twenty-two and twenty-two, twenty-three projects. And we will be sending out the emails this week for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year projects to ask input from the principals, building administrators across the district. Um, and we're also working on the new South Middle School construction. And that in and of itself is a big project and, but it's moving forward in the right direction. And we, we, uh, are designing, um, at this point for the asbestos abatement that needs to happen. Um, for, for first, uh, existing, uh, gymnasium that needs to be, uh, demoed starting in January of twenty twenty-three. And also the other, other, um, existing school building. So current POs, um, from our office at this point is about sixty-eight million dollars roughly. And that's how much, uh, projects that we're working on at this point. Um, and, and on top of that, we're evaluating contingency plans for if something were to happen on Canyon Lake or Robbinsdale. I mean, the, the, the list is, list is pretty, pretty big, but it is, you know, I'm, I'm so fortunate to have, uh, um, uh, to work with you all and, and, uh, uh, the other, uh, leaders in the district. And Lisa, you know, if there's, there's anything in sp- special ed, well, let's go, let's go talk about it, let's go figure it out, let's solve the problem. Um, anyway, and, and working on creating, um, uh, different scenarios for what a South Park s- school would look like if we were to add on to that school and Grandview and Rapid Valley, revisiting those priorities again. And then, like I said earlier, we had a robust conversation at, uh, the Facilities Committee. Even though it was a preliminary, it was an open agenda, I wanted to get, get, uh, the meeting kickstarted. But there were some good discussions and then based on those discussions, we will be bringing data to the, to the team and, and have continual discussion and then bring recommendations forward. Um, and then the other thing I want to mention is we did buy, purchase, uh, two pieces of properties in the district. One on the southwest side and one on the northeast side, um, for us to be able to get ready if, if we had to build a new school and property now is cheaper than property five years from now or ten years from now. Um, glimpse of South Middle Schools, um, rendering versus construction. So on the bottom right-hand corner, and some of you may have seen it, but that's where we are today, um, not today, but, uh, within the last two weeks. So I was telling Nicole eleven percent of construction last month and now with this current month, we're close to fourteen percent, uh, uh, completed and in the construction of South Middle School. Moving forward, um, uh, setting priorities, follow the priorities set forth by the district leadership, Facilities Committee and School Board, um, members, and that could include consolidation, long-term closures, new buildings. You know, we have to get those figured out and, and then those have to be somewhat engraved in concrete or, or even granite. Uh, so that, so that we can figure out where to direct those resources. When we look at those projects and when we look at those needs and, and you go, okay, if this is a building that is going to be closed in three or four or five years, then we can direct resources accordingly and not spend too much money on a building that is going to be closed, um, if that makes sense. And then meanwhile, perform preventative maintenance and reactive maintenance based on the available dollars. Um, and that is, you know, like I said, six million dollars, uh, on an earlier, uh, uh, slide. And also to develop a five-year capital projects plan, along with the five-year deferred maintenance plan. Um, on this five-year capital projects plan would look like new buildings or consolidation. That's, that's what that big picture plan is. And then the, the deferred maintenance is to address the current deferred maintenance needs in the district for, on those buildings that we will be preserving. Along with, uh, a, a ten to twenty-five year plan, if at all possible, um, with this leadership and with the board. If we can get to that point, that is great for, for, for a person like me to, to know exactly where I'm going and which direction the resources have to be spent. Um, well, we have two staff members in my office, me and my clerical assistant, Kathy. And we, we get, uh, things moving like, like this. There's any questions, I would be happy to answer and any, any suggestions, anything, I'm, listen. Sorry, that was kind of quick, but at the third, ten to thirty thousand foot level, felt kind of important for everybody, uh, in the room and, and the audience online to, to know.
I have a quick question. How in that last picture, the Meadowbrook, is the drainage, where is it going? Where's the water going now?
It is actually going to the Rapid Creek, lower part of Rapid Creek.
So I'm assuming you have, it looks like it's now like draining towards the metal and would have perforated it.
And that pipe is bored underneath the building to get out and then connected downstream to Rapid Creek. So, so the water has left the site and there's no icing, there is no workman's comp, there is no trip hazard. And that building is there and it is used by the kids, you know.
Clearly, they can use it better.
Exactly.
Any questions from board members sitting here right now? Go ahead.
Um, so, thank you. I guess the one thing that I wanted to say is, one thing that I heard a lot with the bond is why haven't we done this? Why haven't we fixed that? We haven't, why haven't? And I, I appreciate this tonight showing we are doing things. We have been working on these things, but there's only, only so much we can do with the funds when many of our schools are, as you mentioned, fifty, sixty years old. Um, so we're spreading that kind of far and wide. Um, and kind of related to that, I would encourage our board and anyone, anyone who can really. Um, Ms. Clapham and I have been visiting some schools, seeing Canyon Lake in pictures and seeing Canyon Lake in real life was eye-opening for me. Um, they're doing great things over there, but just some of the conditions that those, those kids are learning in, they are learning. They're doing great things. I saw some really wonderful teaching there. Could be better, um, could be a lot better. And when I saw it in the pictures, I, I knew it was, knew it was not great. And then when I went and saw the infamous boiler, I really truly saw what we were dealing with and it was so sad to see those half, half that building closed down because we had an emergency situation. And so I would really encourage anyone who can to, to check it out in person because the pictures, the pictures don't quite do it justice, what we're, what we're dealing with.
Yes, sir. And, and you know, you, Bishop Carr also mentioned this earlier and, and in the Facilities Company too, and Mr. Hanson did also, that we, um, really knew, need to, um, do a better job or even spend more dollars and, and figure out a better marketing plan for all the work that we have done and how, you know, how good you guys have taken those dollars and dedicated to these projects. And with all your support and the leadership team, we were able to accomplish this now that you've saved those things. So that needs to be said, that needs to be conveyed to public, so in, in, in a lot of different ways moving forward. And, you know, uh, bus tours or having coffee sessions here in this room with public every two weeks. Or there's going to be a lot of other things that we will be discussing at the Facilities Committee. And, and like the city's doing the ca- coffee with planners, uh, every once a month thing. And, you know, they could, I could do a coffee with me here and we could talk about these different things, you know, talk about South Middle School, talk about whatever that, that, uh, might be looking forward to, um, moving that forward.
Any other questions? Um, I don't see any hands up. All right, thank you. I appreciate that. That's a really good start to showing the public. And yeah, I would agree, you have to see the bill, you have to see it. Um, I know that with the last bond, we had several different trips or field trips that the public could come and see. Um, I don't think that we got enough people to do that. But, um, it's a tough thing to kind of do, especially when you have ongoing school. Making sure that the people that are coming into those buildings to, to check them out aren't interrupting their, their education. Making sure that the people that are coming into those buildings to to check them out aren't interrupting their their education. But, um, still. It's it's not something that the public can't do, you know, it is their public school system, they're building, they're they're putting the money into it. So that, um, as long as they call and set up a time that they could come, they're certainly welcome to do that, so.
Yeah, and I'll be happy to take them. I mean, and you know, it's it's one thing to see it with the kids and it's one thing to see it without the kids. I mean, with those narrow hallways in in passing times in in certain schools, I mean, go to Robbinsdale. And Lisa and I visited Robbinsdale, uh, a couple of weeks ago and in the special ed rooms, the needs. And and, you know, there's so many different things happening in the district and and everybody, all the district leadership. I mean, we all are dealing with all sorts of, um, um, problems, but trying to. Trying to hang in there with a smile and fix it as best as we can.
Oh, I do have hand, oh, Bishop Carr.
I, um, just wanted to thank, um, Lisa and Kumar for coming. And, uh, just to let the community know that this process, this study session, um, is by design in the district's. Uh, the board's effort to to better communicate with each other. And I I I didn't talk to any directors directly, but I heard that each director was excited to come and present and talk about. Um, what they're doing and the challenges and the successes so that not only the board knows, I I I think. It again, I heard that a lot of that communication and that information wasn't getting up to this level, to the board level and out to the community. And so I just wanted to state that I think it's important that that this conversation, this this study session, this board meeting. Um, is a design for us to to communicate more and get information out more and and to and to learn. I think a lot of the. I don't know what adjective to to put with it, but I I'll use Mr. Um, Berkland's comment about going to see the school, right? Before that, you have one assumption and prejudice about what the board is doing, blah, blah, blah. Then you go and see, oh, you have an aha moment, right? And so I think that's what we're trying to do with these meetings and and each other week, I think we have directors scheduled to come and talk about their. Um, direction and the more of us that have these aha moments, I think the better that we'll understand each other and just make everything better.
Um, all right, I don't see any other hands. Um, we are on to other. Does any board member have another? Does Shirley have another? Then that's pretty much his other. All right, I need a motion to adjourn. Oh, right. All right. Kate, yes. Troy.
Yes.
Deb.
Yes.
Jim.
Yes.
Jamie.
Yes.
And Michael.
Yes.
Motion carries six zero. All right, we're done.